It's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the January thirteenth regular trustees meeting to order. Would you please stand with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law. I mean, it has its own merit. It's a very valid force of conscience. Pledge allegiance to your God and to this soul with the integrity of trust.
Thank you. Mr. Heaton, would you please take your roll call?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Mr. Stubbs?
Here.
Dr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Potter?
Here.
All are present.
All right. With that being done, we'll go ahead and move to the beginning of our agenda tonight. We have Joe Garrett from Trey Bell that is going to make a presentation for us. On electrical aggregation.
Thank you.
Joe, could you give us your name and address?
Joe Garrett, Dupreeville LLC, Delaware, Ohio. Headed forward in Columbus, Ohio. I'm gonna do a less is more so you can ask questions. So I hand, I gave you guys one of the things is savings analysis. What this represents is for the, I believe it's eight months so far, the electric aggregation program, the savings for the German Township residents that have participated or aren't participating in the aggregation program, savings of $141,000 so far. And of course, we still have months to go. So that's, that's pretty good. We were helped by low, low market prices and a little bit higher utility price. The action items tonight are you have the, an LOA from us there just to the right of your computer there, trustee Stubbs. What that you guys have signed, you guys, let's, let me back up. You've done both of these things before. Okay, it's just time. The LOA is still in force. It lets us get the data from the utility so we can give it to them as far as getting pricing and doing that sort of thing. Also lets us file necessary quarterly or yearly reports with PUC on your behalf. I just want to come out, we'd like to have one that's no later than, older than 12 months. So I just figured if we get new ones signed, we won't have to deal with it for a year. So, so there's that. The second thing that you have is an addendum to the, to the, our management contract that you signed. And in that management contract that you signed had a section that allowed us to purchase electricity for you under a certain rate for a certain term. So rather than redoing that whole thing, this addendum, all this addendum says is we can purchase power for you under a certain rate for a certain term. And this document is something that we've made up for you, which shows so that when we talk about, and I will talk real quickly about what those terms are and what the price is. But so there's no thought of, you know, we're just pulling numbers out of the thin blue air. I want to show you a little bit of behind the curtain of things that we look at that, that direct, tell us where things are going. Okay? And so what you're looking at is the AES's price resets every June first. Well, all the utilities in Ohio reset June first. And they go, they go to an auction to get power. On the right-hand side there, the, the red number at the bottom was for 24 and 23. Those are the numbers that they settled at the utility. That's the utility price. They get those numbers by adding together the blue, the green, and I don't know whatever color that is, salmon, maybe. Those all make up the, the cost of how they get there. And so it's not a, you know, will it, will, will it not? It's what they purchase. And they can buy, as you can see on the left side, they can do multiple purchases and then it kind of averages out. And then that's, that's the blue portion. Then the, the top portion, which is a really small number, that's like utility markup. There's some state taxes and other things fall under that. The green one is the one of note. The green one is what's having an effect on us this next year. And by us, I mean consumers. It's the capacity charge. It is to, it's how, and it's regulated. Okay, everybody pays. So whether or not you're buying from the utility, you're in an aggregation program, you go out, buy it from somebody else on your own, you will pay, you pay, it's part of the rate. That'll be important for here in just a second. But our, ours went up ninefold this past year, a nine times increase. So if you look, you were at .0049, which is, you know, less than, you know, that's a hundredth, less than a thousand, four, nine thousandths of a penny. .0044, well, it jumped all the way up to .03. And that is not, that's not gonna be a, I mean, that's the, that's the capacity charge for June 1/25. That's when it goes into effect. And what we're talking about tonight won't change what you guys have in place. This is for when you're, you know, this is the next step, right? The next one, when this one runs out. So that's going to happen. And so we're based on the auction that AES already had, they do have one more to go. So this could change a little bit for 25. But where we know the market is right now, it's not going to. Not significant, like we're, this, this red number is going to be really close to in the ballpark. So that's why when you see that number of 900973 is why we are saying allow us to purchase at 92 or less. And because we say 92 doesn't mean we're gonna do it at 92. What it means is that's anything under that, we have authority. We're probably gonna be somewhere in the eights, which is still good. We're a little bit, you know, this last contract, we're, you know, in the 10 years I've done this, a half a cent to a penny is, is normal. We were very, very lucky with this last one. We've saved a lot more than that, and that's great. Now, I do say that year two, I think we'll save more money than we do in year one. Because the forward markets right now are just, they're way up. The cost of power is going up. There is a lawsuit right now. We used to know capacity charges three years in advance. Right now, we do not know beyond June, May 30th of 2026. It has not been set. They also hold quarterly, they will adjust this rate quarterly based on, those have been paused because there's a federal lawsuit on how this was calculated and FERC's involved. So who knows when they'll settle that? Who knows? The way they do things, they're looking at, they've got a year, you know, or so, so they'll, they'll take it. So they were supposed to, it's supposed to happen in December, didn't happen, and there's no news as far as when it will. But that being said, that's why for years two and three, what we want to do is have a point seven, point oh seven, so seven sets of less, plus what other capacity ends up being, right? So it's, be considered variable, but it's not really because we're locking in, we're locking in everything except the green portion. And then what we're saying is we're gonna pay the green portion no matter what it is anyways. It's just gonna get added. And residents will still get a letter every year to opt out when we know what that, when that's set, that number's set and will know. And that's, we want to do that. And the reason we want to do that is, you know, we're at a pretty high rate, so high that, you know, some of the generators and suppliers filed lawsuits about how it was calculated. I, we think it's very feasible, but that number's going to go down. So if we fix beyond that period unknown, it's gonna be a higher price. So we don't want to do that. So, but, so if we say, well, let's only do 12 months. Well, the problem is all the things say the farther out you go, the more expensive it's getting. And that tracks with supply, demand. How much supply we have available in the state of Ohio versus what they're saying our demand's gonna be, they don't add up. The hard demand's getting beyond what we, what we have. And when you get to the top end of the supply, they charge for, they, they want lots of money. And also business says, if I got it, and I know you have to have it, and you're not gonna get it from anywhere else because, you know, there's a lot of the generators that they own that, we can produce about on an ongoing, if we had to, 160, well, it's 180, but about 160,000 all at one time kilowatts in the generation pool for Ohio. Now the coal plants are shut down. Well, I think we topped out at like 155, 152, 155 this past summer. So knowing that, it's not like if you three are all generators, I gotta have all of you. You, you know, if, if, if I said, well, I'm not, I'm not gonna use yours, you're too expensive, I'll just do, they can't supply me enough. I gotta have yours. They're smart in that they're saying this is what you're gonna pay me for. You know? And so we're in that situation right now. And so I don't think in the next five or six years, we're seeing rates coming down. Because to solve, there's gonna have to be a solution to that problem. Solution they're talking about, I'm not so sure how well it's gonna go. They're talking about like, because what's happening is these AI, you know, AI, 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 right? And Ohio is promoting AI. They're trying to draw as many tech firms as they can in here. You know, up near me, you've got a huge Intel plant going in. I know down in Chillicothe, they've got something, Honda's building a battery plant, somebody else has somewhere. But anyways, they're, they're going after them like crazy. They use 15 times the amount of power that a regular data center uses. And I read an article from a guy from Jobs Ohio said, oh, we've missed, we didn't, nobody really stopped to understand that we're gonna need this much power consumption. So I say all that to say, that's why we're going longer. That's why I'll probably come back to you in a year and say, give me an opportunity to extend out another year. Because really what we should probably do is say lock in for five years. That's just a bridge too far, I think. I'm not comfortable with that. I don't think you would be either. I mean, it's probably maybe the right thing to do, but it's, it's just, that's, that's a long commitment. I think it's better to, do you do the three-year lock-in so we know what we're paying, why we know the rates are still reasonable? And then next year, say, well, you know, it's looking like it's getting worse. Maybe we want to extend another year. And then we can have that conversation then. I think that's probably the better way, the safer way, the less risk way to, to approach that. So what we're asking for tonight is to have that authority. And the reason I'm asking for it now, and your contract hasn't arrived for a while, is in 2023, the cheapest day of the year to buy power was February 14th. The cheapest day in February last year was the 21st. Both years, 23 and 24, the cheapest day in March was March 1st. When I'm making it, in February was two different days, which I can look up on my phone. Point that I'm making is we don't know when the market will hit a really good buy point. We don't, we don't know. We can guess, but we don't know. I can almost guarantee it won't be on a night you have a meeting. So, and, and the fact that February has seen some low prices in the past now. Been really cold this week, which we didn't have for the last couple of years. And that is probably a big part of why February pricing was so good is because we had big gas storage. That being said, there's nothing that says we don't hit February and it's 45 degrees for the first 10 days. You know, we're Ohio, that could happen. So my job, as I see it, is to prepare you and your residents for the best possible situation. Best possible situation is for me to have the authority if the market falls out, and the sooner the better. Not to say we will act, right? We have time. But we definitely don't want to miss an opportunity. So that's why I'm here tonight to say, you know, again, it's something we did already. And have the discussion if you guys have any qualms about doing that. Like I said, we, we've done it before. I just think we need to, I think we need to be ready for that opportunity before it gets here. And it takes some time to get into that position. It's not as easy as you sign that tomorrow, I can do it. I can. I've gotta get all the data, gotta get it all sent to suppliers, get them to process it because they're gonna look at load data on peak, off peak for your community. They're gonna compare it to all of our communities, just so you guys know. Dupreeville manages 2.7 billion kilowatts of power. We take Columbus out of that, we're still at 1.7 billion. We're taking as many communities that we have and every utility and putting them all together. We timed everybody to run out basically around the same time. The reason we did that is we knew the capacity was unknown, and we weren't gonna gamble. Right? We weren't going beyond the known capacity because we were fearful that what could happen, which has happened, could, and we didn't want you guys to be in that position. Because what will happen in some of these other groups is the suppliers are gonna renege. They're basically gonna say, we can't provide, you know, we can't, because they have to pay this capacity, right? And they're gonna say, we can't do that, it's beyond their profit. And they're gonna say, sorry, you know, we, we go out of business, we're not gonna do that. That is a change in law, which we are allowed to charge through. And it's gonna send letters out to everybody in the community saying, sorry, that price you thought you had through December no longer exists. And here's the new price if you want to keep doing it. That's gonna create major disruption, and we didn't want that for our people we represent. You guys would be hating me. You know, that's a lot of phone calls on, I don't know, few people that you didn't have anything to do with. So, so that, that's why we did it. But we are trying to take everybody out together. And to do that takes us a little bit of time and actually takes the utility, you know, they can take up to two weeks to get us that information, then we have to send it off. So that's why I'm here in January saying, hey, I'd like to do this. So that's what I got if you have any questions for me.
So the chances are this isn't gonna be Archer Energy, the one that we had last time. Is it the question, and we have talked about this, so if you have solar panels, you're gonna have to opt out again, I may.
And for the people that have the opt-out or have the solar panels that opt-out, again, that's a good, you know, we've talked about this, that if you are, if you, you know, there's a certain number, and you probably know it, that if you're providing, producing a certain load, it, it makes sense to you, right? And if you're, especially if you're lucky enough to been grandfathered in where they're still paying you for it. A lot of places they're doing away with that, right? So, so yes, in that case, for those, those individuals, I would, there is a do not aggregate list. You can get on, which means you'll never, ever, you're done, right?
So will they, will everybody get a letter like they did last time?
Yeah, each year, right? So because we're doing this, because years two and three are unknown, even though we're locking in everything except capacity. And once we know capacity, we'll let you guys know ahead, what, here's what the capacity was. So here's what that means, you know, add this number to this number, right? But they'll also get a letter with the opportunity to opt out if they don't like that new number. Now, we say point oh seven, I'm hoping we can get something under that. I mean, we've, our folks feel very confident that, you know, in talking to suppliers, that they can do that for years two and three. And, but I'm, when I'm doing the numbers and the math, I'm like, that's an even better deal. So I hope we can do that. And if we can, we should certainly do this. So let's just say I won't be completely shocked if I come back to you and go, well, I got year one done, but year two's been a problem. But it's what everybody's saying, so I say, let's do it. Even if we get it, I'm thinking, well, we're gonna be pretty happy come next year for sure. But yes, they can do the opt-out. And if I was in that situation, I'd just, I'd just, I'd just sign up for the permanent opt-out.
Most things change. You're not gonna get any.
What happens when you do that is you no longer get the information. So, you know, but again, if you're running a surplus, it doesn't really matter to you. Now, if you're only producing 20%, then you're handling, so buy from the utility, then that's a different story.
So we signed this tonight.
So do we, did you a motion? I think you better do it as a resolution, since this is a contract. Add them, make that resolution 10.
All right, I'll introduce resolution 202510, a resolution to approve the contract addendum from Trey Bell. Let me read the whole thing. Wouldn't hurt. All right. Insert, we're going to enter into an energy consulting and management agreement. That agreement remains in full force and effective day and is amended to confirm the certain specific and limited agency authority that Trey Bell has to act on that behalf of the client. One pursuant to the agreement, Trey Bell assisted the client in creating, conducting, implementing and managing a governmental aggregation program to aggregate governments' entity energy accounts. Two, with continuing and ongoing changes and improvements in the marketplace and energy industry, there are opportunities whereby client can obtain favorable pricing and or term for the program. But those opportunities can be, and require quick action by Trey Bell on behalf of the client. Three pursuant to this addendum, Trey Bell shall have the limited agency authority to investigate and negotiate pricing and or term for the benefit of the program and client's citizens. Trey Bell shall have the limited agency authority to represent clients in those negotiations and execute any necessary agreement or documents subject to the following restrictions. A, Trey Bell's agency authority is limited to require that any newly negotiated pricing shall be equal or less than point 0920 per kilowatt hour, inclusive of capacity for term through June 2026. B, Trey Bell's agency authority is limited to require that any new, newly negotiated pricing shall be equal to or less than point 07 per kilowatt hour, subject to an annual capacity adjustment for any term to commence after June 2026. C, Trey Bell's agency authority is limited to require that any newly negotiated term shall be up for three additional years of the program under the existing MSA. And D, Trey Bell's agency authority is limited to require that at no time in exercising its authority shall Trey Bell expose or subject client to any additional liabilities, exposures or requirements or obligations than it has under its current MSA. E, Trey Bell shall provide written notice to client of the results of its efforts to obtain pricing and or term for the program. F, Trey Bell shall file, record or execute all documents, communications agreements or other instruments, including without limitation, any agreement or documents related to the master supply agreements entered into with certified retail electric and or natural gas suppliers set forth above, and any applications, certifications, renewals and or other filings at the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio as Trey Bell and its reasonable discretion may deem necessary or advisable from time to time in order to execute upon and deliver the services set forth in section three of the agreement. G, as such, the client hereby irrevocably appoints Trey Bell, its officers, employees and agents and/or any of them as attorneys in fact for the client to file, record or execute such items for the client in the client's name, place and stead to act on behalf of and protect the interests of the client in performing the services in this agreement. This power of attorney being coupled with an interest, with an interest shall be irrevocable for the life of this agreement. Four, all other terms of this agreement shall remain in full force and effect.
Is there a second to resolution 2024 seconded? All right, thank you. Any discussion? If not, I will call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 202410 is adopted, I will pass.
Do you have the official?
If you've got a copy here, go ahead and pass it around and sign it.
I will scan it and email it to you.
I need to pick one, what, we have signed two, you keep one, you take one?
Sure.
Let's do that.
You need it tonight, huh?
They're giving me a hard time if I don't have the images.
I need to put a resolution number.
This is the second.
Send that, you need page three, right? The signature page. Because I will put a resolution number on it, and I will send it.
Oh, I signed the wrong spot. I think.
Did you sign on page two?
I signed on page two. I was supposed to sign on page three.
Sign, yeah.
So, we'll do your copy there.
Well, we're doing two of them.
Mine's wrong. Did you print off the copy?
I didn't.
Do you, do you have to have two originals or would you like me to run and make a copy?
We're just doing it, we're just, just, just draw a line through that. I'll make them, we'll, I'll tear this page off.
Well, take, take page three and then we'll.
We'll just copy, we'll copy this.
Send you to this end for this. So you need two copies. You just said I'll need two copies of this page.
You want me to run and make copies?
No, no, we've got two copies.
So I signed this one too. That one you should make a motion to sign the LOA. Okay. That one I don't think is for your resolution. Okay.
That's, that's an authority, that's a, and that's just one signature. So if you want to make a motion, that, that the chair signed. Which I don't know if we, we probably did that, we passed.
I may have even signed it.
Yeah. My idea is I need an official. Signature print from the, I guess.
So we'll send that copy that you're signing, Mr. Stubbs, with Mr. Garrett. And then the one that page two got messed up, pass it down to me. I will.
Well, let's make, we'll just make a copy of this before I go. We need the one with the signatures on it.
That's fine, you can take that.
Okay.
We have two copies with signatures.
Yeah, except they signed on the wrong page.
No, we can sign page three also.
Oh, okay.
And then I'm thinking, okay, this is the one you're taking. The other one, where's the other one? Pass it on down then, if you will, please.
So that was my fault?
By trying to create the official copy.
No, you, you said you're good.
Right.
I, I'm up to speed with you.
All right. Then you'll have a clean page two that you can use.
Got it. So then we need a motion to approve the authorization letter?
Sure.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Or did I even hear anything other than?
Need at least two eyes. Do you want a copy of that? Yes.
Yeah. Or do you need to take that tonight too?
Sure. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks for coming up.
Be careful. I do have one question before you go.
Yes.
Gas aggregation.
Yes.
Is there gonna be a bid on that this year? The only reason I ask is our cemetery would be one of the very, very few people that would be impacted by it.
Okay. We can, we can. We can also do a standalone, that's for the cemetery.
Okay.
We'll see, they'll reset the pricing, the end of the month resets the price for the next month.
Okay.
Now, natural gas is anticipated to plant.
Okay.
Okay? The issue has been recently that the utility price has been cheaper than the market price.
Okay.
Okay? But like anything on utilities, they can jump way up. And once they do, if you don't have something in place. So really the aggregation program works kind of as a safety net.
Okay.
This past year, you would have, we would have been upside down. It would have cost people more money, just in 24 to, to do it. But the price is locked, right? My guess is the February price is gonna go up quite a bit because it is so cold. And how they set that is at the end of the month, usually around the 26th, I believe, is when they calculate, and that will be the settlement price plus the adder for whichever individual utility, and those change depending on the utility, what, what their adders are. So if we have a bill, if, you know, if you can email me a bill, you know, the cemetery gas bill, I can go out and, and look. Because, and then the question would be, what are you doing with the gas at the cemetery?
Just heating.
Heating a building?
A shop and a rental house.
Okay. So then the question becomes, do we want to do it now going into summer where they're not gonna use much? Or wait and do it?
We don't.
Next winter.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not.
So what I guess what I'm saying to you is we think natural gas. we think natural gas is going to continue to go up. Up until this point, with the, with the warm winters we've been having, it's kept the price of gas down.
Okay.
Lower than the market rate.
Okay.
Okay? And so. Going forward, it's probably going to be a good bet that we're going to see an increase in gas. I think because this year we have another liquid nitrogen plant coming online. And if you've read that the transmission from Europe through Ukraine for Russia providing theirs has been shut off. And so we will be providing more liquid natural gas to Europe along with like Qatar and somebody else, but I think we're the bigger one. So, and the change in administration will eventually, probably if you drill more. But the problem with that is going to be in, in the short term, you still got to have pipelines to pass it through and we don't. So I think in the next couple of years, we're going to see a rise in natural gas. So we need to keep, we need to keep watching it. I don't know if I'm completely comfortable with acting yet.
Okay, that's fine. I was just, it didn't come up, so I.
Yeah, yeah. It might mean that, you know, hey, February, March, we pay more than we would have, right? But then when we look at the 12 month as a whole.
Okay.
Maybe not worth it.
Okay.
So, but knowing that what it might be worth is looking at sometime over the summer, potentially locking in for a later start date. Just because, you know, keep in mind, we can buy. And everything's based on future pricing. That makes sense? But because we buy in, let's say we buy July 1, we could not start that until December 1.
Okay.
Right? Right now for later. That might be a good. That might be a good strategy for that situation.
All right, well, we'll have that discussion.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, now that I know you got it, yeah, I'll keep it in mind.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Do a one off for the cemetery. Can I dig you back on that? Because I'm one of the white, full of people in the town.
Yeah, my guess is, is what we probably look for first is we'll watch the aggregation and see if, if that situation arrives like I think it's going to. You know, we, we may say, well, let's just do the, let's just do that. But if, if not, then yes, we'll, we would be. The person that I think that we would end up probably with on the, on the natural gas is really good to work with. And my guess is we, we would, he would offer that as an opt-in to anybody. So even if, if we're still quantifying, does it make sense from an aggregation standpoint? Maybe an opt-in.
Okay.
Position might make more sense, especially if we can opt in with no termination fee. Might make more sense and make that available to others.
Okay.
So actually, I just did that at your neighbors on the electric. At some residents, one of the communities, they didn't want to participate. The other board is getting calls about it. And so the supplier has agreed to allow anybody in that community to join that other community's program on an opt-in basis at the same rate.
Okay.
So. So there are some workarounds there. But I would say this late in the year, let's wait and, let's, 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 let's see where it goes. Because right now, today, I can't get you a better price than the utility.
Fine. Not a problem at all. So.
All right.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. Uh, thank you for coming too. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
We update, so.
Yeah, no problem. I'm going to head back if there's no more questions. All right. Yes. Yeah. Oh. And if you happen to come down Wednesday night, come see, come see. We'll be in the exhibitor hall. But we're also, that'll be, that's a kind of a fun event. We always have food in the van and so.
Thank you.
Swing, swing through before you head back. All right.
All right, thank you very much.
And Mr. Keener, let's go ahead and do it for your name and address.
Uh, Mark Keener, do you have my address on the floor?
Thank you.
It's okay. Any other visitor comments tonight? All right, seeing that, we'll move on to the fiscal officer's report.
All right, good evening, everyone again. I have quite a bit tonight, so we'll try to get through it as quickly as possible. To begin with, you have minutes from our December 30th year-end meeting and also the January 2nd organizational meeting. Any corrections?
I did not see any.
I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I've also given you final, final reports for December. We looked at the details of those reports back at the year-end meeting. Uh, but there have been a couple of additional items. There was a credit card trash receipt at the very end of the month that I wasn't aware of. We, of course, have our December interest from the bank, First National Bank and Star Ohio. And there was also an automatic medical payment. So. If we could have a motion to approve the final reports and authorize the payment of that one additional medical bill, which is voucher number 1078.
I'll make a motion to approve the final December financial reports and authorize the payments of the additional December bill, electronic payment voucher 1078.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Back in December at our regular meeting, we talked about various transfers from the general fund for 2025. Uh, the first one is the $8,000 that will go to the road and bridge fund as an approximate payment for the mowing and rural cemeteries by the road department. In order for me to record that transfer, we need to have a, a resolution adopting that. And we'll make that number 11.
I'll introduce Resolution 2025-11, a resolution approving a transfer of $8,000 from the general fund to the road and bridge fund as approximate payment for the 2025 mowing of the rural cemeteries by the road department.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Dr., uh, Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-11 is adopted. The second transfer will be a total of $37,400 from the general fund to help offset the allocation of trustee and fiscal officer salaries to three other funds. And again, we will do this by resolution number 12.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 2025-12, a resolution approving the transfer of $37,400 from the general fund as follows: $16,300 to the police district fund, $16,300 to the gasoline tax fund, and $4,800 to the garbage and waste disposal fund. The purpose of the transfer is to strengthen the fund balance of the recipient funds.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-12 is adopted. The next item to transfer talk in deals with the interest that the general fund has accumulated throughout 2024 that could possibly have been sent to other funds. And just as a reminder, the state has specific requirements related to recording of interest. Certain funds that we have are required to receive their pro-rata share of interest. These funds include the general fund, the motor vehicle license tax, the gas tax, and the permissive motor vehicle license tax. Certain of our funds are not allowed to receive interest. And these are the road and bridge, garbage and, garbage and waste, police district, as well as the small, by small police funds, the road levy, and the five joint levy funds with this, with Germantown. And the state requires that the general fund receive the interest that would have been earned by those funds. And then certain funds are allowed to receive interest with trustee approval. And for us, these include the American Rescue Plan Act, the Sunsbury Cemetery, and the Faust Trust Funds. And you have previously approved allocating interest to the Sunsbury and the Faust Funds. And the interest related to the ARCA Fund is still being added to the general fund. Now, I've given you a spreadsheet that shows the Star Ohio interest during 2024. It's a total of $123,525. First National Bank, their interest that we got was $50 and change. I have not analyzed the First National interest since it's so small. Uh, but last year, you transferred amounts representing interest to the road and bridge, the police district, and the road levy funds. And based on this spreadsheet that I've given you, the, I would recommend 2025 transfers related to 2024 interest totaling $35,500 to the, to the road and bridge, police district, and road levy. And that's going to be Resolution 13.
I'll introduce Resolution 2025-13, a resolution approving the transfer of $35,500 from the general fund as follows: $6,900 to the road and bridge fund, $25,600 to the police district fund, and $3,000 to the road levy fund. The purpose of the transfer is to strengthen the fund balance of the recipient funds.
I have a second. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? If not, I'll call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-13 is adopted. Now, last year, we did discuss whether or not you wanted to transfer interest from the general fund to the garbage and waste disposal fund. And last year, you decided not to do so. If you want to do so this year, I would recommend a $9,000 transfer using the same language of the resolution we just did. So we got up to you whether you want to consider doing that.
I think we're in good enough shape in the, in the trash fund right now. To just leave that. So I would, I would like to not do that.
Okay. Shall I continue to ask you every year, or is this sort of a blanket? This is how you want to handle this?
You can ask it next year. That's fine.
I've given you an updated spreadsheet of the analysis of the Faust Trust Fund and how much can be distributed to charities. And should recall, the original principal cannot be spent. Additionally, only 75% of the increase above the original principal may be spent. And I first prepared this spreadsheet several years ago after I reviewed Dr. Cross's work papers from back in 2019, when he really did some deep dive into the trust fund, the Faust Trust Fund. So as of the end of 2024, I believe that you can transfer $13,891, not transfer, donate, $13,810.91 of the total balance in the account of $31,952. That's $13,000 would be available to donate. Uh, at the organizational meeting earlier this month, you approved this year's appropriation of 2,000. You can, whenever you're ready to make that donation, we will do that with a resolution. Does not have to be tonight. But I wanted you to be aware of how much actually is still available to transfer.
Yeah, we didn't make that payment until June last year, so.
No, I don't think so. They can come and give us an update when they want to, when they want more.
That's usually when they're beginning to prepare for the fall and when they're at their lowest in terms of cash at Sunshine in the Bag. Thank you for that. And we'll come back to you in June and talk about it. Okay, to our big issue of the night. So following last month's regular meeting, I submitted the three resolutions you adopted related to the proposed fire EMS levy. Sent that to the county auditor for certification of the amounts that would be generated under those three options that you approved. I've sent you the certificates. The auditor reported that an additional two-mill levy would generate $599,000 per year. A three-mill levy would generate $898,000. And a four-mill levy would generate $1,197,000. Uh, the additional annual tax for each hundred dollars, $100,000 of the county auditor's appraised value would be 70 with two mills, $105 with three mills, and $140 with a four-mill levy. Now, the study committee that consisted of city staff, Tyler Raymer, Dr. Cross, and myself haven't met since the auditor's certifications were received. At this point, we don't have a plan to meet. But at our December 19th meeting, the committee did not change its earlier recommendation to you as trustees that you approve placing a four-mill levy on the May 6th ballot. And the deadline for filing the levy with the Board of Elections is February 5th. So we will need to make a decision tonight.
Just to kind of summarize the, the last meeting that we had with the city, basically, everyone went around and recommended a four-mill. Even.
I would say that four mill will get you $0, not $1,197,000, but.
And it was recommended by Mr. Raymer to go with it. Do something different. That wasn't, you know, wasn't, wasn't really approved by the members there.
Okay. I, I think it's too much, but I'm, I, I'm not sure I can object to what they've requested, so.
Yeah, and the plan is if it does not pass, it may then, then there would be some certain renegotiation probably going down somewhere. Top of the two mills just doesn't, you know, you just don't have enough. I don't know, you know, they're going to form a committee to try to get this thing through. And Mark and I have talked about it, you know. I don't know if there's anything that can make it. But, but also, if you don't have fire EMS coverage in your jurisdiction, you don't have anything. I mean, you don't have a basic safety, you know, you don't have police, but they have them on a deal to try and talk to.
Right.
Plus, it's going to certainly affect homeowners insurance rates if they see that their, you know, it's not so responsive, so. Hate to say it, but again, you probably think about the four mill again.
That's what they asked for.
And that, but again, there really wasn't. As far as the city, there wasn't really any reworking and much leading wanting to try for a different one. That's, it's kind of the person I got on.
The, the one difference this time versus the last one in November is that the committee has recommended a 10-year levy rather than a continuous levy.
Yeah, I, I think they're asking, I, I get it. I understand it. But I think they're asking for too much when, when it's, it's a it's a tough time for people, so. I mean, we can run the levy again. It's going to cost, obviously, whatever it costs to put the levy on the ballot. But I don't, it's not like there's 50 or 100 people's minds you have to change a significant difference.
Yeah.
Right, so. Yeah, what, what was it? Einstein said doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. But we can put it on again. They can try again. It's going to cost, obviously, the money to run it. I think if it doesn't pass, it needs to be a hard look at what we can do to do something that will pass and running the same millage, I think, is, is tough, so.
Well, if you're ready to make a decision, I've given you the resolution language. You will just fill in the blank that I've given you with how many mills. And then again, we, we have to go with 10-year because that is also what the auditors have certified. It's a 10-year, I think.
Are we reading the whole thing?
I think you can just read the, um, the resolution language.
That you have on the?
That I put in my report.
Okay.
We'll make that number 14.
Yeah, we can go back and find it.
It's, um, I didn't send in my report.
Okay. I, oh, I just on the back. I got it. I got it. I printed from back. Uh, I'll introduce Resolution 20.
Number 14.
14. Our 2025-14, a resolution to proceed with a levy to tax in excess of the 10-mill limitation specifically for the placement on the 5, 6, 25 ballot of a four-mill additional levy for a 10-year period of time for the operation of the fire and emergency medical service department.
I'll second that. Any discussion of the resolution?
I don't disagree that it's needed, but I think it's not. I think. I don't disagree that it's needed, but I think it's not, I think it's too much of an ask at this point in time. And a three-mill would be a much more safer bet to try.
So before I call the roll to review, this is a four-mill levy for ten years.
Correct.
For firing EMS. Any, any more discussion? Would you like to ask if anyone in the audience would like to comment?
Any comments? State your name and address for the record, please.
Hertz Jacoby, one-two-nine-five-five, Harris Road. Some point, um, levies have to be sold, you know, so they, they have to be explained to the, to the community. A lot of people can be persuaded if they know what they're paying for. You know, it's kind of like you go to the store, you look at two items, and one has a package that said, explains what you're buying in it. And I, I've gotten the feeling over the years that the voters don't know what they're being asked to buy. They don't know what they're getting for their money. That needs to be sold, and there needs to be some leadership for that. That leadership has to come from you guys, honestly. If, you either have to believe in EMS or you don't. And it, it can start with the, the people that, you know, support you, you know, that have voted for you. And there, there's enough people out in the community, I think, I believe, that, that feel like EMS is very, very important, it's, it's extreme. Try it when you need it, right?
Right.
When, when you're, when, when the chips are down, you need that stuff, those services, so. I, I don't know, I, I feel like we, we just have to try a different approach and try to get it sold.
May I comment to Mr. Jacoby about that? You're exactly right, we need to sell the levy if we're going to pay one passus. And I think that the city fell down in November and did not do enough to try to sell it. They did not establish a levy committee, and they did very little promotion other than a few meetings, civic meetings that the fire chief went to and, and, and information about the situation in the city's newsletter. Well, nobody in the township gets the city's newsletter, so that was all lost. Now, there was also Facebook posts, and many of you are more active on Facebook than I am, but. So I didn't see anything on Facebook about it because I don't look at it. But you said that the leadership needs to come from the trustees, and that's potentially problematic. There are very strict requirements that the trustees or any governmental employee can only share facts. They cannot try to influence a vote. So they have to walk a fine line. I do also walk a fine line. They are allowed to help, but it has to be on their time. Basically, the, the term is on their time, using their dime. So they can't use any township funds to try to promote the levy. There has been, there will be a levy committee established this time, and the city has already received a ten, a promise of a ten-thousand-dollar donation to pay for mailings, for pay for yard signs, to pay for door sign, door, you know, door hangers, thank you, that's the right word. I think the city realizes they didn't do enough in November, and they have to move quickly and, and heavily. If I'm going to try to explain this, Tyler Raymer will be part of that committee, and he has already kind of laid out what he thinks the, um, the, the door hanger and some of the advertising needs to have in it. I hope that that will help. But for us to get involved or any township employee, you got to be very careful. There was a significant finding by the state against the Belburg School Board about a year ago related to a Belburg school levy. And if you can Google that and you can read the details. There was findings for recovery from the school board members and the superintendent. It was not a pretty sight.
Can the trustees endorse?
Oh, well, they, well, they will endorse it by what their vote will be.
No, publicly, and that, you know, like a public announcement.
They can't say, we want you to vote for this. Now, as individuals, they can, but not as elected officials. And, Dr. Cross, do you have any, did I misstate or, I don't know, I had what I said.
I think it was very accurate, Mark, thank you.
Visitor comment?
Yes.
State your name and address, obviously.
It's Abigail Hale Dennis, one-three-zero-nine-one, Oxford Road. I agree with Mr. Jacoby on part, there was no advertising. But I agree with Mr. Stubbs that four-mill is going to be way too much right now. Especially, I think it's in a lot of people's heads, I'll bring it up, the water and sewer district still. That is another thing that people get concerned when they see large amounts, even though this is fire EMS. And the other thing I would say, and this may be unpopular, is I would be careful on who to pick on the committee to head it because when the school was passed, the person that shoved it down everyone's throats is still going to be helping, so it's going to look bad to long-term residents.
Any other visitor comments?
Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-twenty-five fourteen is adopted. Just making a note of Ms. Dennis's comments.
Hail Dennis.
Hail Dennis.
Thank you.
Sometimes I see it both ways, sometimes I don't.
One time I forgot to sign in as Hail Dennis, but it is Hail Dennis legally.
Okay.
All right. Next item, Dr. Cross received a request from the Montgomery County Office of Emergency Management that the township adopt the county's natural hazard mitigation plan. And I've given you the resolution that was provided to him and then on to me by the county. And that would be Resolution fifteen.
So, yeah, so they, they need a, uh, every four years they come up with their mitigation plan. A lot of it is very similar probably to the four years before, so they didn't have our, our resolution on, on record. So he said he'd go back and check to see the nineteen twenty-twenty-one, twenty resolution?
Nineteen, and then, yeah, then there's a new one every five years.
Every five years, so anyway, so he, he got back to me that we hadn't signed that either, or hadn't submitted that, so. So basically, it's just a matter of submitting that resolution and, and getting that to them, which should be all set for five years. The plan itself is about a hundred and seventy pages long, if you want to.
I did not read it.
You probably didn't, oh, I, I went through it, you didn't miss a lot. So, so let me, I'll go ahead and make that, what's the resolution number?
Fifteen. Fifteen is correct.
I'd like to introduce Resolution twenty-twenty-five fifteen, a resolution adopting the Montgomery County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan and authorizing distribution of the plan to the affected interested responsible parties.
So, thank you. Any discussion? I will call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-twenty-five fifteen is adopted. Last month's regular meeting, I discussed with you the article and then from the November, December twenty-twenty-four issue of the Ohio Township News Magazine. The, the article is entitled, "The Countdown Begins: DOJ Sets Deadlines for Web and Mobile App Accessibility." And as you recall from last month's meeting, a new Department of Justice rule requires that all governmental web content and mobile applications be accessible to people with disabilities. This may require us to redo our website. And whether we're going to need outside experts to help us do so, I, it remains to be seen. But the good news is we have more than two years before the compliance deadline, which is April of twenty-twenty-seven. Last month, I recommended that you review a fact sheet available on the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division website. Then at some point in a future meeting, we could then start discussing this requirement. If you're ready to talk about it tonight, that's great, or if not, we can wait another month or two. We do have some time.
I'd say let's wait. See if anything is sent to OTA to.
I don't see anything at the OT, OT, OTA conference about this. Would be good if they had one of their such manors.
Yeah, it's like nobody knows them, so.
It was in their magazine.
Yeah.
Okay, I will just keep it on my, um, monthly agenda, and I drink.
Man, I don't know if you guys, I, I receive periodically, it's from the same firm, and always talking about our webpage. You know, so that may be somewhere to start, get, you know, talk to them next few months, see if they, they're, see, see if they're aware of this, they may not even be aware, so.
Did you get an email?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can forward it to you. She, she emailed me every month, it's like, so it's from me.
Okay.
It's not specific.
Does it go to spam? Because there's, I just.
Mine doesn't.
Okay. I get one, but I did just go straight to spam, so I just, I deleted it, I'll just.
The one thing we don't want to do is wait till the beginning of twenty-twenty-seven and then have to panic. So we can do it in a more structured timeline if we start sometime maybe later this year. Okay, uh, haven't heard anything from Dr. Cross or Ms. Close or Mr. Holwork since last month's meeting about our response to K O A Risk Consulting, which was supposed to set forth the actions the township has taken or will take related to K O A's recommendations that resulted from their twenty-twenty-four site visit to perform an autonomous risk control audit.
Has it been completed?
Have they been completed?
And I have forwarded that.
You forward, but you then send me a copy of my files.
I'm going to thank Jeremy again for doing that.
Thank you both for taking care of that, Ms. Close, also. Okay. Uh, final, just quick housekeeping note, I will be attending the Montgomery County Auditor Carl Pease Annual Update at Sinclair College on Thursday. Is anyone else calling by chance? Okay, and also, as many of you will, I'll be attending the OTA Winter Conference at the end of this month.
Sorry, Mark, we go ahead, this time, go ahead and introduce a resolution to have the Germantownship, have Germantownship pay the expenses for the fiscal officer and trustees to attend the twenty-twenty-five Ohio Township Winter Conference. Do that now?
Sure.
As we talked about that previously.
Yes. I think you just did that.
I'll second.
Our, just for the people online as well as our visitors here, we already pay for any staff who goes. Ms. Close goes every year, Mr. Holwork, Mr. Hamilton often go. By the way, did you see, Mr. Holwork, there is a special rate for just attending the trade show this year.
Actually, they, I was surprised to see that there was a handful of seminars that were road-related this year.
Well, good.
More so than have ever been in the past, so depending on the weather, we might see if we can't hit a couple seminars further there.
So this would only, this resolution that Dr. Cross has introduced would only apply to the elected officials. And apparently in the past, when things were a little stronger in the General Fund, that did occur. You backed off on that during the tough years as we were trying to pay the water and sewer district loan off, so. And now the General Fund is a little better, better conditioned. Any discussion of the resolution? I'll call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Dr. Cross? Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five sixteen is adopted. And at the end of the meeting, uh, Mr. Stubbs, as well as Chief Burch, have requested that we hold an executive session to consider the appointment of a public employee. With that undone.
All right, thank you. Mr. Easton?
Do you want to do your dinner, Mark?
Oh, thank you, I'm not done. I have so much paper over here tonight, I forgot it. Yes, I do have an additional item. I forgot to put in my cover report, so I didn't remember. As you know, the township is an official American two-fifty Ohio community. As part of applying for that designation, we were required to partner with a local civic or nonprofit organization. The township's partner is the Historical Society of Germantown. Germantown is current, the city of Germantown is currently applying to also become an official America two-fifty Ohio community and will also be partnering with the Historical Society. However, the city's official status will probably not be finalized for a month or two. I don't know why they didn't do it when we did it earlier last year, but I don't know. Anyway, the America two-fifty Ohio Commission awards grants twice a year to the official communities who apply. The city's grant writer, Pat Higgins, is preparing an application for this month requesting that the Historical Society receive a five-thousand-dollar award to enhance and expand the society's annual historical building student art project. The application filing deadline is January thirty-first. And since Germantown will not be an official America two-fifty community by that deadline, this application will be, will need to be submitted through the township. As the Historical Society's treasurer, I am also a member of the committee helping Ms. Higgins with the grant applications. And I'm going to request that you give me the authority to sign the application on behalf of the township once she has it completed. I think we can do this as a motion, but if you're more comfortable, since it is a grant application, doing it as a resolution will make it number seventeen.
Give the wording for that. Okay, I'll introduce Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash seventeen, a resolution to give Fiscal Officer Mark Easton authority from the board to apply for a grant for the, well, how was it, US two-fifty?
Right, two-fifty.
American two-fifty.
Any discussion? I will call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-twenty-five seventeen is adopted. Thank you for the reminder, Dr. Cross, and I believe I am now finished.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. We will move on to the police report. Chief Burch?
I've got monthly and year in stats for the police department. For last month, four miles driven, six thousand, three hundred and sixty-two, for the year, seventy-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-one. Total dispatches, one hundred and eighteen, for the year, one thousand, two hundred and fourteen. Cases closed, we closed one hundred and sixteen cases last month, and we closed one thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight for the year. Case follow-ups, three last month, total of ninety for the year. Zero arrests last month, a total of eighteen throughout last year. Business checks, three hundred and sixty-one last month, uh, four thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven for the year. Vacant or vacation house checks, uh, eighty-seven last month, and six hundred and thirty-five for the year. I just want to remind, uh, whoever's listening, if you do go out of town on vacation, please let us know, and we'll be glad to go out to your house every night, every day, and check your house for you to make sure nothing's, uh, going on out there that you don't want to go on. Occupied house checks last month, nine hundred and fifty-two, and last year, eleven thousand, two hundred and seventy-six. We had fourteen crashes last month, total of a hundred and two last year. We had twenty-five traffic. We had twenty five traffic stops last month, total of four hundred and seventeen for the year, fifteen citations last month and a total of a hundred and eighty two citations last year. Equipment issues and information, started the bid process for the unmarked car for next year. Plan on trying to have the bid for the next trustee's meeting as deliveries at least three months out on that, so that puts in May when that would be paying due, so. Looking at that for the end of May timeframe. Pretty or done to you. As of when I wrote this, it was still in the body shop. This is year strike number two. We got it back today and we delivered to Yikes to have the graphics put back on the driver's side. Still waiting to hear back from Katie Rose on the replacement of car X push bumper that was damaged when a citizen packed into the cruiser on a traffic stop. So we'll get that done as soon as that part comes in. Katie Rose?
Have you, have you done any more, did any more about the?
Total.
Total bumper for the year?
Push bar. I've, I've looked into them. It's something I might consider in future purchases. This one's gonna be the same push bumper that was on there. They're, I believe eight hundred dollars for the entire front end push bumper. I'm looking for one that's more sturdy than the one that, that I found because that's just coming off of that. The center bumper goes back and then those just kind of hang off of it. I'm looking for one that's supportable, a little bit better than what I've seen so far. So I'm, I'm afraid that one wouldn't help any if we get the year.
Find the right one, I think he'll be well worth it.
Yeah, I believe so. I believe so. Monthly information, currently, Dr. Cross is the Emergency Communications Policy Committee Representative from our trustee group. We need one for twenty twenty five. Basically, what the E C P C is, is it's the governing body that oversees the operations of Montgomery County Regional Dispatch Center, making decisions on policy changes, capital purchases and budget related emergency, emergency communication with the county with representatives from all participating jurisdictions on the committee. Captain Wheeler asked that I get back with him as soon as possible on a trustee that will fill that hole for twenty twenty five. So that'll be.
I mean, I can, I can do, I, I don't really do anything on there when they ask for business and stuff. I mean, that's basically just take a look at it and usually it's all you do.
So you're okay with?
I'm, I'm okay if you want to keep, since I'm on there already, then you don't have to change anything, but yeah, it's a situation where I, I don't, you know, I have an expertise to handle that committee, so.
Okay. Do you need a motion to that effect? For example?
So do you guys, I, it's something that we'll need to cover, ain't it?
I mean, I, I don't see the need. You have a volunteer.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And he's already, he's already on it, so not changing anything.
No, that's correct. Thank you, Dr. Cross.
Maybe we would talk.
Just to follow up on the portable mobile radios, we are compliant. They're all installed, everything's been updated, so we will be ready for the July twenty twenty five Mark's two step verification security upgrade. One note, last month, I met with the new value school safety team led by school board member Tyson Dillon. This is a diverse team of area police chiefs, school faculty, the superintendent, teachers, principals, S R Os from around the area, a Dayton officer that was actually involved in an active shooter situations on the team, and a Montgomery County attendance officer that's well versed in comprehensive school threat assessment guidelines. There's approximately fifteen members on the team. I'm thrilled to be a part of it and really happy that, that our jurisdiction is doing something like this to make our schools safe as possible. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Could you email me the device report that you handed out tonight? It's different than what you emailed last week.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'll turn it over to Jeremy for his road report.
Okay, I'll make my break tonight. Just FYI, just forwarded to Dr. Cross and Mr. Easton the information on the K O A for coming into compliance with their recommendations.
Thank you for doing that.
No problem. First thing on my report tonight, back on December seventeenth of twenty four, just prior to that, we had some routine maintenance done on one of the rooftop units for the H V A C. And unbeknownst to us, they dropped something on the roof that put a hole in the roof, which caused a major leak in the meeting room and damaged some of the ceiling piles over there and actually blew out one of the lenses in one of the recess lights. And made part of the mess on the floor, but luckily it didn't damage the TV or any, anything else significantly. So immediately we contacted Air Force One and let them know about the issue, the pictures of it, and then immediately contacted Dry Tech Exteriors, which was the company that did the silicone coating on the roof that was giving us the twenty five year warranty on the roof. And they immediately sent a representative over to repair the hole, which you probably could have stuck at least two or three hand fingers in there, my son's hole. They repaired that and so far we've had some more rain since it got cold and we haven't had any more leaks. I sent an invoice to Air Force One, the H V A C company that does our repairs and preventive maintenance, and they have agreed to put that cost towards our account. So as we have a routine annual maintenance fees, or if we have to have anything done to the units, we'll start whittling away at that one thousand two hundred and eighty eight dollars and thirty seven cents is what it costs to do all the repairs, including Dry Tech and the road department's labor and the materials that we purchased to do the interior. So
with that being said, by the way, we did receive our first invoice from Air Force One, which I have not paid obviously.
Right.
And it's now sitting in my office.
Okay.
Where I'm tracking how much is still left.
Okay. But this, if you remember, we had a similar problem right before we had Dry Tech Exteriors do the silicone repairs on the roof or silicone coating on the roof. So this isn't the first time it happens. It has happened and I, I know mistakes are made and, you know, butter fingers, lifting heavy things or if there's snow on the roof or it's wet or, I, I get it. So to try to prevent any future problems, I contacted the representative with GEKO, who actually manufactures the coating that's on the roof, and asked them if we could place rubber mats around the perimeter of all three units to protect against objects being dropped, toolboxes being set down, gas cylinders or what have you. And explained to him what, you know, what we were doing and what the material was and he had not seen there'd be any problem with that. So the road department went ahead and purchased enough mats to go around all three units and that total cost was four hundred and ninety five dollars. So that's been done, so hopefully we'll have this issue again in the future. The only other thing I have is it's been snowing. I mean, do I need to say anything more? We, we've used approximately fifty tons of salt in the last two events. I haven't had any breakdowns, so. Would, other than lack of sleep. Yeah. So.
Thanks a lot.
This is what we do in the winter.
Appreciate you.
I appreciate it. So that's all I have.
And you guys have a whole lot to do with only two people.
Oh, yes.
Hope people understand that it takes time and I think you guys do a fantastic job getting all the way across.
Almost eighty lane miles of road with two people and.
Yeah. Yeah, greatly appreciate what you've done because, what you do, because this was a crazy storm, hopefully we don't see one of these for a while.
A lot. A lot of snow.
Just like the old days. Yeah. So.
Seriously.
Hopefully that's done for a while.
Yes. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holwork. Shauna, zoning?
I don't have much. It's winter, things are slow in zoning. Two permits in December, Dwight Rickmore came and got two assigned permits for his shop. Hopefully he is just about finished. I really like working with Dwight, he brings his goodies. He always follows all the rules, he's a pleasure to work with. And an act exempt farm for Bendigrove. The next meeting of the Germantownship Zoning Commission is on February fourth at seven P M. And I think Mark is gonna cover a little more of that, so that is all I have.
So the Germantownship Rural Zoning Commission and the Germantownship Board of Zoning Appeals met for their respective reorganizational meetings on one seven twenty twenty five. To better serve the community, the members decided to change some of the positions on the B Z A and the zoning commission. Recommended changes are as follows. David James will move from a zoning commission sitting member to the zoning commission alternate. Joe Scholler will move from a B Z A sitting member to a zoning commission sitting member. Rachel Albert will move from a B Z A alternate to the B Z A sitting member and Jim Martin will move from the zoning commission alternate to the B Z A alternate. So I think, you know, all those people have been appointed before, we just had some changes around current, maybe able to give us a little bit of light upon that since those were.
Well, it's, yeah, it's just those changes in black and white. One of the things that will make this improve the ability of the zoning commission is the H B three fifteen, which was signed into law on January second. And it's, it affects special zoning. It's the largest township legislative, piece of legislation in decades, specifically dedicated to townships and it was sponsored by two gentlemen, I don't know if you ever watched the Ohio Channel on T V, but Bill Sykes, he'd spent his whole life in townships before he moved up to the Ohio Legislature. So he and this other fellow who was also in township.
Thomas Hall.
He was next to Rick's house.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So those two gentlemen pushed it through and they know township, you know, what we have to deal with, the problems, and Joe Scholler made the comment on Tuesday night that he thinks perhaps one of the biggest changes is that townships will now have the ability to impose civil fines. So that's gonna give some teeth to things like nuisance abatement, zoning violations. Instead of violators just thumbing their nose into the township, township will have the ability to enact fines. We'll want to put that into the zoning resolution. So having somebody like Joe Scholler attorney is gonna really help us step through that. But that's one of the reasons that was, they just, Joe's offered to serve as president in twenty twenty six.
Okay. And I point out, there was only one state senator who voted against H B three fifteen.
Yes.
And that was our dearly departed Senator Antoni. One final kick in the rear end before he left office.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve all the changes to the Germantown, Germantown Zoning Commission and the Germantown Board of Zoning Appeals effective immediately January thirteenth to twenty twenty five.
Same. So the terms of office?
Well, the terms of office.
With the office, not with the person?
Exactly. So those, those four terms will actually change a little bit to make sure that you know, you got one person coming off every five, every year.
So that seat, let's, as an example, Mr. James' seat will expire. Mr. Scholler will expire whenever Mr. James' seat will expire.
Uh, yeah, I've got that, and that's it on the.
And I'm sure Ms. Close will update that schedule.
I'll, yeah, I'll do that for you.
Thank you, Mark.
Somebody will.
Say you always tell the story. You can't believe me.
Any discussion of the, oh, yeah, I have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
That's all I have for this order.
All right. Is that all? Ms. Close?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll go on to trustee reports. Mr. Potter?
Yeah, I just have a short one. We, we had a park meeting, not too much going on. We had one new board member, Isaac Morton, who's sitting right there.
Thank you for serving.
There was still one short of members, if anybody knows anyone. Went down to Kirkshire Park during the flood event and erosion repair is still working as it's supposed to. M M I, we've had no M M I meeting, we've had no pool meeting in December and it gets canceled again for January. Johnny Leakey called me back in December to, to let me know that he was parking his trucks again up at his diamond mill property for the winter months. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Potter, Mr., or I'm sorry, Dr. Cross.
Really fiery M S Oversight Committee was canceled on one six, Germantown Council Meeting was canceled on one six, Senior Oversight Committee was canceled for one nine due to destruction of the building. That's all I got.
Okay, good, so I'm gonna make up for it, cause I got quite a bit tonight, unfortunately. I had Joe Garrett, he's already been here and left. I asked T S C Communications, Lonnie Peterson, which is T S C Hanson Communications for an update on the township fiber optics cable that they, they are running at, at the moment. They were unable to make it tonight due to a conflict in their schedule, but they asked to be put on the agenda in the next couple, at some point in the next couple of months to come discuss with us, but they did however send a statement in that they asked me to read and it says, they've completed the installation of approximately a hundred and sixty five miles of varied fiber optics cable primarily in the western portion of Germantownship and have passed three hundred and eighty five homes. We have included, they included a map to show routes that have been completed in twenty twenty four. They applied for an Ohio broadband grant that included most of Germantownship that we, that they had not built minus the city of Germantown, but they did not get awarded. Alta Fiber contested many of the locations in Germantownship with the claims that they had plans to build fiber or get for them to build fiber to them in the next two years. So apparently there's multiple companies now and I think that's why down Boomer Shine, fiber appears to be running again. Oh, that's Spectrum doing that, so, cause I know they cut one of the residents lines from, from.
T S C.
T S C. Yeah, so they had.
They had a different one on Boomer Shine. They had none on Oxford.
Right. So hopefully.
I was gonna say, something, they didn't do much in the southern portion of township.
So hopefully they'll be here in the next couple of months to give us an update of what they want to do. And I appreciate them getting back with me on this board, this point, so hopefully we can move forward and get internet to most of the places in the next year or two. They will be in the meeting, as I said. One thing we need to do tonight is I need to reappoint John Scapiak to the cemetery board, his term expired on December thirty first, so I would like to make a motion to reappoint John Scapiak to the cemetery board for a two year term.
Second up. Any discussion?
The city, I notified the city and they should be doing the same thing at their next meeting.
We got an email from Kelly today about that.
I didn't see it.
And she said it would be on the agenda.
Perfect. Okay, I, I missed that, so.
It just came in in the afternoon, so.
Now, probably already down there.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Just like to compliment our School Resource Officer Nichols for doing a fantastic job. He's taken to the job quite well. He's obviously outgoing. He's taken to the job quite well. Uh, he's obviously outgoing. He's doing a great job. Um, I think everyone enjoys, uh, being around him in the building and I think he, I think he enjoys now being in the building, so I think it's a good fit and I think he's doing a fantastic job and look forward to, uh, having him in there in the future. I'd like to thank Jeremy and Scott for all their hard work during the, the bad weather, 'cause that's no fun and you guys did a great job keeping up with it. Cemetery, quite a few things here tonight. Due to the extreme weather, uh, the roads to the cemetery were temporarily, temporarily closed due to unsafe conditions for a short period of time. Keith and his team did an excellent job of, of working to get them possible as soon as possible. Uh, I know he mentioned that the, the new Kubota UTV that we purchased, uh, this year made a, a, uh, very drastic difference in their capability of getting through not only more safely, um, but it was easier and saved significant time compared to the backhoe with the front blade and then the salt attachment to it, so. Um, he also mentioned it's thank you for the, getting, hooking them up with the salt, being able to make that work. Cemetery, uh, software. So the software we're currently using for the, for, um, for the office work, uh, is a twenty thirteen edition with the last update in twenty sixteen. So we're slightly out of date, so we're, we've been in the process. Keith and Bob specifically have done a great job. They have looked at eight different software companies that focus specifically on cemeteries. Um, and Keith had narrowed it down to a couple. Uh, and tonight in the cemetery meeting, we made a, uh, resolution to go with, um, web cemeteries out of Pennsylvania. Um, for approximately fourteen thousand dollar setup cost with a four hundred and forty dollar approximate, um, monthly cost going forward. Uh, this pro, this cost will, in the long run, migrate all of our data into a, a cloud-based server. So all the information will be stored that way. Um, it's going to allow them to, um, spend less time on each work order. When you put it in the system, it's gonna go and replace it needs to go instead of currently as the process is. Bob re-types it into multiple different places, including Microsoft Access. And it will give us a cemetery website, um, which is, which comes with the cost and there, uh, we're gonna be able to take credit card payments. It includes an interactive website. It's gonna streamline paperwork and work orders to eliminate errors. And then they're going to migrate all of our data. So, uh, we, we did that tonight. There's a three-month waiting period. They're, they're behind. And then it takes three to four months, it sounds like, to get up and running once they're working on us, so we're looking summertime to have this hopefully up and running. And again, our, our goal on this and Keith's, Keith is a numbers guy, uh, does a great job. And he's, he thinks within three years we'll have paid this off just by the time that we're saving. Um, the office workers and himself going forward is going to, uh, give us a, a satellite map of the cemetery and they're gonna be able to pinpoint and do online sales of graves with locations and, uh, I think it's gonna be, be nice. Taking the credit card payments is definitely gonna be a, a nice thing for them. Um, and hopefully increase sales, um, of lots going forward. We had one person submit a resume for the office worker position. Um, so we are, it's been out, out, it's been shared a ton of times on Facebook and it's ran in the Germantown Press and the company that, MVC, um, newspapers. So we're gonna hopefully interview that person next week and see where we go from there. Uh, preliminary findings on the audit have found a few errors from, um, the previous fiscal officer. By next, by next month, I hope to have more information on that. The process is still ongoing. Uh, wreaths across America was in the cemetery in December and they placed two hundred and thirty-six wreaths. Um, I may not have had that on there, 'cause that was after the fact. Okay, WRCG, we'll need to meet sometime in the next couple of months to organize and discuss our plans to go out to bid for the rumpie, or not rumpie, but the trash. Um, trash contract. A year ago, when we were in Columbus for the OTA, a trustee from Jackson Township and myself spoke with someone from Waste Management who was interested. Um, so there's definitely gonna be multiple companies bidding this time and hopefully reduce our cost. Um, we will also need to transfer fiscal responsibilities to a different fiscal officer per our agreement several years ago. Mr. Easton's been it for several years and it's time for him to pass that on to somebody else. I assume Jackson Township is gonna take over for him, so thank you for everything you've done in that role.
It's a hard job.
I know. So, uh, this might be the year it's gonna be a hard job, so good time to pass.
Bidding out at my time, although every, I haven't, haven't had to, um, take my brass knuckles to collect from any jurisdiction their dues, so that's a good thing.
Yes, so the dues are collected from the different jurisdictions to cover the legal costs, um, involved in the, in the bid process. So we will have an attorney through the WRCG to help us, um, with the contract to get through that, to get through that. Uh, next, we already mentioned at the OTA conferences, January twenty-ninth through the thirty-first. I will be attending those three days. Um, couple of things I had planning for the future, uh, for twenty twenty-five and beyond, I'd like to work with Metro Park at some point this year to potentially vacate Old Mill Road, like they had mentioned their, them being interested in doing that. Um, so I'll reach out to them, uh, maybe by the next meeting and see what we can do. Is, they mentioned it, so let's, let's see if they'll follow through, as long as there's some of the board is still willing to. Yeah, I, I assume so.
Just so you know, I think that they're going to have to join all those properties to one before there's the county law allows.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would be a cost.
We told her and she, I mean, so we'll see what they do going forward, so. Uh, this year we're gonna complete the, we already mentioned the water district, but this is the final year for the payments on that. Uh, we've done a great job of keeping a healthy general funding and hope to continue, we should, will continue our fiscal responsibility. Continue to build positive relationships with our residents through events such as shred day, Santa breakfast, national night out with the police. Um, and just positive interactions anytime our, our police and road and all of us around the community, um, to continue building on that. Um, and then to continue building up our joint levy funds with the holdback money in case there's an issue in the future. I think that's important. Uh, I talked to Mr. Rohrbach this week and, um, he's been, he was fighting with the city in the nineties about the ten percent holdback, so. It's done for a purpose. It's done to, um, as a safety net and it needs to continue. That concludes my report. I would like to ask for an executive session under Ohio revise code one twenty-one point two-two G one uh, for, um, employment purposes.
I have a motion you're making.
A motion.
I need a second. Any discussion? Now I'll call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
We are adjourned in the executive session at eight thirty-seven.
Uh, Mr. Heaton and Chief Birch, please join us. All right. All right, eight forty-six, I'd like to make, uh, we turn back on. It's eight forty-six, I'd like to make a motion to come back into regular session.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Back in regular session at eight forty-six.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at eight forty-six.
Same time.